On behalf of Mayor John John Cologne, Councilwoman Dr. Mary Jane Selly, Councilman Bill Dangler, Councilwoman Mary Vera, and Councilwoman Dr. Peter Booth, welcome to our first town hall meeting. During our campaign, we spoke about being accessible to those in our community and bringing City Call to you. We welcome your ideas and suggestions, and also we're here to hear, to listen to your concerns. We will take with us your ideas and try and find ways to utilize them. Tonight, Mayor Cologne will update you on our 100-day plan. For those of you who only speak Spanish, I'll volunteer to translate for you. Please let us know if you require any assistance. We would like to hear from as many of you as possible. If you require an extended time, please do not hesitate to speak with us at the end of the meeting. This town hall meeting will be the first of many, and we hope that we can all work together and bring in pride to our city and making this a better community for all. Now, this time, I would like to ask Mayor John Cologne to leave some few words.
Can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay. So, thank you all for being here. It's very nice of you to take the time out of your, uh, being here with us today. As a council president, Widdes spoke about, I'm gonna talk about the progress of what we've been doing in terms of our 100-day plan, but before I do that, I just want to introduce some of our city employees who are here, so if there's any questions which may very well be that we can't answer or address, perhaps they can, so, thanks. So, to begin with, we have Mr. Stan Zuma, who's the director of DPW. We have Chief Jason Groba from the Police Department. Mr. John Guto, who's our tax assessor. Mr. Carl Turner, head of planning. We also have with us Captain Pete Antinutti from the Police Department. Rob Goodman, who's the head of Community Development. I just wanna make sure I'm not missing anybody. We also have a few elected officials here. Mr. Avery Grant and Miss Bye Peters, who are from the Board of Education. And we have Reverend Devereaux and Reverend James from some of the local churches here. So, thank you all for being here, and again, thank everyone for being here. So, we talked about when we came into office, a 100-day plan, and I just, you know, that 100 days actually is over another two weeks or so. So, we thought this was a pretty good opportunity to talk about some of those things. Were those she's the speaker there? Okay, good. So, I'm just gonna pretty much answer a lot of those, those questions, and then we're gonna open it up. Widdes will come back up and, you know, we can talk about that. But I'm just gonna quickly go down the list, and I'm not gonna get into a whole lot of detail, but after that, if you want to ask, have anything about a specific thing on there, just so we know. So, the first thing is the abandoned vacant property. Creating a registry and enforcing the ordinance for owners to maintain their property. That was an important issue for us, and so I just want to let you know that we're in the final stages of finishing up that city ordinance with registering abandoned and vacant property. Is that actually something that Councilman Dangler and I were involved in quite a while ago, and, you know, involved into what it is today. Next, I had explore ways to improve code enforcement, so I just wanted to tell you what you're, what we're doing with that. We've doubled crews in the last three months for trash and brush removals, so hopefully you've seen an improvement there. Both streets we crews now are run all day citywide. We're cracking down on illegal dumpers with signs and cameras. An illegal dumping is really, really a problem in the city that we're, we need to address. Stepping out enforcement on dumpsters, upgrading, cleaning, and maintaining the municipal lots. The West End lot was recently paved, and the uptown and downtown municipal lots, we've tried to address quite a bit. We've worked with the county, there's a lot of tree limb cutting. That was an issue with trees extending over the streets, and we've attempted to clean as many plot drains on as many streets as we can. This was an issue that Councilwoman Widdes had been very involved in, and I thank her for that. In terms of community policing, it's also something that we spoke about. We placed a new police substation in Pure Village, and we're in the process of reopening the former substation on Broadway. We've just initiated foot patrols in all the businesses, districts, downtown, uptown, West End, Pure Village, and the train station. And just last week, we completed Police Week with the help of many people in the community. A seven-day event of community activities and educational forums for all age groups around the city. Reverend James, I thank you for that. We're currently, this was something that Councilwoman Booth was very involved in, and that was supporting initiatives to address the opioid epidemic. You know, it's a problem, especially in Monmouth County and Ocean County, there's particles every day. So, we, we think that it's important for us to get involved in that. We're doing a lot of outreach, planning what action we can take. Again, Councilwoman Booth and myself, we've gone to a couple of meetings with the Family Fiction Network. It was very active in West Long Branch, and we're also meeting with residents and groups to investigate how we can organize and help with that issue. Input ways to improve services for youth and seniors. Councilwoman Widdes and Selly recently met with the county parks and recreation system, who haven't really been in the city in the past. And so, we're partnering with them to bring more programs to Long Branch for youth and services. So, moving forward in the future, we're trying to see what we can do with that. Just to give you a small example, we're having Community Day on October 13th, which I'll mention in a moment, but just from that meeting, we're gonna have a rock climbing wall at Community Day, which just moves on that, that single meeting that we had last week. We also have our second meeting of new disability committee committee to see how we can improve services and access to the disabled and provide more education, awareness, and opportunities in general. Anita Klebrich is here with us today as part of that group, and I thank you for being here. We also talked about expanding community holiday events throughout the city. As I mentioned, on October 13th, we'll be having our first-ever Long Branch Community Day, which will celebrate the diversity and cultures in our city. And that's gonna be, include everything from a parade to all sorts of unusual activities. Things that was put together by the Board of Education, the City of Long Branch, the Long Branch Community Think Tank, of which Mr. Dangler and Reverend Devereaux are part of, and I know I'm missing someone, and the Chamber of Commerce. Last month, we also had our first outdoor movie in Sloven Park. It truly was very successful. We've had some movies in the past in West End Park, but, so, we're gonna do that again next spring or summer, and that was a successful event. And we're also in the process of having additional holiday celebrations throughout the city. So, as you know, many events are held in, in Pure Village, and that's great, but we're gonna add a holiday event again near the municipal complex, perhaps something in West End Park, and we wanna bring back the Easter celebration to the West End as well. Improving response to resident complaints and requests for service. Again, there's been a few of us, council members, and we're updating our website from a customer service perspective. And the idea is to be more efficient, more interactive, and to make more services available online. This would include everything from online payments, request for service, and program registration. And again, we've met with our IT people next week. We're gonna get together with an outside vendor, and apparently, these things can all be coordinated. And again, we wanna try to make things as efficiently as possible so that, you know, you don't necessarily have to come into City Call for us to do these things. Parks and public spaces are very important to us. We wanna grow with that, but what we've been doing in the last couple of months is, we closed what's called the West End Green Acres Park, which is the area on Old Ocean Boulevard between Brighton Avenue and West End Avenue to vehicle or traffic that was open last year. We added several picnic tables, benches, flower pots, and umbrellas to the area. I'd like to thank Mr. Dennis Sherman for helping us with that, and some of the others in the audience here. We added new benches and barbecue grills to Branchport Park, upgraded and added new fencing to the playground area. I have Mr. Parnell, who was with DPW, to thank you for your assistance with that. We cleaned up both north and south sides of significant portions of Taconacy Lake, including the pathways to the trestle. That was a real big undertaking. Director Zuba, thank you for all your help, but that is one with everything else as well. And we've cleaned up and made significant repairs and improvements to Jackson Woods. That's something that had, I think, a little neglected in the past, but that's, that's moving forward. There's a new gazebo that could be installed shortly, and we've applied for a large county grant application that's been submitted for further improvements. Hopefully, we'll get that, and Mr. Goodman from Community Development helped us with that, so thank you. And we also are, Jake Jones, we're trying to spruce up plant flowers around City Hall and other city-owned properties that maybe are just now sort of vacant or where we just cut the grass. We're continuing with some of the Go Green initiatives, improve recycling in Long Branch, and energy-efficient lighting. We're working with the Environmental Commission. Mr. Garland is here with us this evening on many initiatives, including a recently adopted resolution just last night to follow the state's lead to ultimately eliminate single bag, single-use plastic bags. We're working to obtain Sustainable New Jersey certification to qualify for Long Branch for environmental funding, so we had a meeting with Sustainable Jersey. That was something we were very involved and active with until the year 2015. For those board members, the gentlemen from the state said that you are the role model for the state, that's the school systems, and we wanna get there as well. And we've also restarted a green team, which is part of that certification. We'll continue our efforts to beautify the boardwalk. We did have some artwork that was damaged during Sandy that was put back, and we'll bring that back again next summer. In terms of economic development, we went on a few more things. We started a shop, Long Branch Program, which we talked about during the campaign. It's a rewards card to dine and shop locally for property tax, the property tax program. And that, we adopted that resolution. We have one large sponsor to get that kick-started, so we're moving forward with that. That's a card, a property tax rewards card that is distributed to all residents. Businesses participate, and there's typically like a 7% to 15% reduction when you use the card. And that reduction immediately goes to, to, to the city, and you would get a direct third-quarter tax rebate off your property taxes for shopping, you know, locally. And of course, that's a win-win for everyone. It's a win-win for residents and a win-win for the businesses as well. So, we're working with that. If you are a renter, there's a cash rebate that you would get. So, we're hoping to have that up and running in a few months. We're also looking for ways to promote local businesses and encourage public-private partnerships. Again, Councilwoman Booth had hooked us up with the DCA for assistance with plans for economic development. Our UEZ is, is hopefully back up and running, so hopefully sometime soon, we may get funds that were taken away from us back in 2012 and put into, put into the general fund. That was, is Jake Johnson, Jake Johnson's acting? Jake, Jake, I'm sorry, my eyesight is... So, I'm sorry, we also have Jake Johnson from Community Development. Jake has, has run that program for, since its existence, I think in 1994, and we're very happy to have Jake because as other communities who are partly using the statewide have lost almost all their funding, or used all of most of their capital funding, we were able to continue the program, and now Governor Murphy has, wants to reinstate it, so we're hoping that those funds can come back to the city. And that was, that was a big effort in terms of sidewalks and street business facades and police officers and, and equipment. So, the positive news is that, that's, that's, that's really looking good. And I was just informed yesterday that we've been selected as a federal opportunity zone, which is new federal tax credit program for private businesses within the zone. And this area includes the oceanfront from Madison Avenue, this is the zone, I should say, to Taconacy Lake and West of the Avenue beginning. From what I understand, it's not a lot of details yet. I guess Jake, you know a lot about that as well. But private businesses who invest in that zone are getting federal tax credits, so it's an incentive for, I think, 10 years or so to get people to invest in areas in that film. We've also initiated a federal work-study program with Monmouth University that we just adopted the resolution for yesterday. So, you know, some of the things we talked about was hiring local people and just jobs and employment. So, that's a program where we get to pick and choose our Monmouth University students who come in, and the federal government basically subsidizes most of, most of that cost. I think the city, if I'm not mistaken, pays somewhere, somewhere between $2 and $3. And, and it's not like, and it's, like I said, it's sort of competitive program by which we can choose the students who fit what we need. And I know Senior Center is interested in one or two people, Community Development, somebody to help us perhaps with marketing of the Shop Long Branch Program. So, that's a good thing. Councilwoman Booth, again Jake Jones and Brookdale Community College is hooking up with a training program. That we're, we're supplying minimal funds hopefully, and Brookdale College is providing the space and the training for young entrepreneurs. And it's a, so we have all sorts of ideas with that. And finally, Councilman Vera has arranged for employment opportunities at various construction sites on the Long Branch Toshia Park. And he's kind of done that on his own, appreciate that, so thank you, thank you. Review of all city-owned and finance development sites. That's something that's a work in progress, so we're working on that. I don't have much to report on that at this point. Focusing on lower Broadway, beautification of the site while under development. So, we have met with the lower Broadway developers. They are waiting for their approvals to get started on their construction. We are waiting for them to show us that they have the financial viability to do the project. But if everything falls in place, one of the things we did ask them to do is to, before construction starts, to spruce up that area a little bit, to put some landscaping around it. What I, what I was told from my brother Frank, he took a tour with some of the, some of the groups in Asbury Park. And if you go through Asbury Park, if there's vacant land, there's like sea grass and some benches wherever, wherever things are, you know, it doesn't look like, you know, there's like this gravel space there. We're hoping that with developers' cooperation, which at this point, they told me they would, they would assist us with that, and we're hoping that comes to fruition, that we do something, we do something like that. Not sure, I guess I might want to put the caveat there, but, you know, they, they agree to, to discuss it further and think that that's a possibility. So, review department transition reports to ensure accountability and reduce costs. We've established a finance committee. Who is on the finance committee, I'm sorry?
Well, I'm David.
I'm sorry, Anita? Oh, Anita, and, and, so they're meeting regularly with the CFO to review operations. As you know, or you may have heard, we have a new business administrator who will be part of that process. The transition reports will continue to be reviewed and updated, and we just wanna continue to take an overall closer look at all department activity. We're also exploring options for shared services. There's a meeting that I'm gonna be attending next week with Freeholder Arnon. He's having a roundtable discussion with elected officials to discuss shared services and economic, other economic and fiscal policy ideas. We've been doing, you know, I don't wanna say we're on the forefront, but we've been doing a lot of shared services with other communities, and hopefully we'll continue to do that. And just last week, Councilwoman Selly, Councilwoman Booth attended a county best practices and innovation summit to see how we can deliver better services county-wide to citizens through shared services. So, we're looking into that as best we can. Looking for private grant opportunities to supplement the budget. Just so you know, grants that have been awarded recently were the Branchport Park bulkhead, so, proud to come along, but most of the bulkhead along Branchport Park is gonna be replaced and improved. Branchport Avenue road paving between Julyan and Harrison, or is it Julyan and Broadway Rock? That's been approved, did you know?
Yeah. Between Julyan and Broadway.
Oh, so all the way, you know, we, we, it was from Atlantic Avenue to Julyan, now it's gonna be from Julyan to Broadway. That's been approved, and then there's Florence Avenue Park. That has been approved for, you know, just making a nice park there. We've also, as I mentioned, applications have been filed for Jackson Woods, improvements there, for sidewalks around Prospect Street, and the Anastasia School was part of the new grant program. And finally, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, there's, yeah, I just wanted to talk about, you know, we, we spoke about bringing City Hall to the people, so, one of the things the library is proposing or trying to do is they're, they're, they're starting a civility program that explores how we conduct business together in a civil way. As you know, we're televising and streaming all city council workshops and meetings, and meetings have not been televised before. We're starting with employee and volunteer recognition programs, we're exploring that. We're going to, tonight is our first town hall meeting. Again, thank you for being here. We have more plans of informal meet-the-mayor events and firehouses and restaurants. Next Wednesday, Chief Roebuck, it's National Coffee with a Top Day, and so we'll be, we'll be participating with offices and at all three Dunkin' Donuts facilities in the city. And we also try to have just an open door policy at City Hall, so if anyone just wants to stop up or call me or any of the council people, please do. Or, or, someone came to a council meeting three weeks ago, I'm sorry, the last council meeting, they had a little incident, and they waited three weeks to come to the council meeting, which was fine, you know, we needed, we took care of it, but what I said then, oh, I speak for all the council members here, that, just, just call us. If there's an issue, if there's a concern, if there's a problem, please just give us a call. We now have suggestion boxes located in council meetings, the Kirk's Office, and municipal events. I apologize if you're not here, do we have, do we have a human back? In, in any of them, whether we do or not, you know, it was a simple thing. We really are getting some suggestions, good suggestions, and we're trying to respond to those as well. I mentioned, we're updating the website for the reasons I mentioned, so we're, we're in progress at the IT department. And finally, we just, we're just investigating ways to probably, and further discussion to, on ideas of how we can just be present in general and form. So, I'm just gonna thank you again. I'm gonna turn this over back to Council President first.
Thank you. And this time, we'd like somebody to come, you know, stand, and someone bring a mic to you, and you can ask us questions or wish you the best.
Good evening. My name is Nate Edgar. I live on Washington Mountain Drive. We are forming a disability committee group to discuss and, and address issues concerning people with disabilities on our banks. I would like to work closely with Mayor Cologne and, and all the council members to address issues like this accessibility housing, transportation, organ, and many others. Mayor Cologne and a group of us throughout disabilities discuss these issues at a meeting we have on Monday. We, we gave and received a lot of support. We will have our next meeting in a couple of weeks. So, if anyone would like to get involved and, and join us, please let Mayor Cologne know, or let me know, whoever. It, it, it will, everybody help. Thank you, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, Darlene Hiddick from Tower Road in Long Branch. I was wondering if there's a better way to be informed in these town hall meetings? No one I know knew about it. I think Councilwoman Booth actually informed me, and I was proactive to look up on your website. But maybe when you're redoing your website, could you have something like, people can sign up for an email list of events and things like that? I know it's probably not up to mails, but maybe email, that might help so that more people could be aware of, because I say it's kind of, it's not that fragile, and I think there probably would have been more people. That's it.
Anyone else? John Maddis, Marsha Levy. Might I talk a little bit about the Transit Village? I'm in the President Administration for the lack of progress from the previous administration, but I just wanted to kind of find over to you both from here. About a month ago, on Pavilion Avenue, I noticed some construction going on, and I'm very encouraging to see that something is probably funny being done in the train, train station area. However, within a week, saw that, that stall... However, within a week, saw that, that stalled, and, uh, since then, they've removed all the construction equipment and so on. But I think when I, I decided to look into the Transit Village situation, and I went on the website to notice, you can't take complete information, but, uh, uh, in, um, May of 2016, uh, we were designated to Transit Village the 32nd of the state. In July of 2017, uh, Asper Park was slated to be, uh, made Transit Village, uh, in the 33rd. In June of this year, um, as the Department of Transportation has been giving out a million dollars each year to different Transit Villages, in June of this year, Asper Park was rated awarding $325,000. Uh, I was wondering if, if we had gotten the funding up to this point, uh, from the Department of Transportation? And, uh, if not, if maybe somebody can get in touch with them and say, hey, where's ours? Uh, because Asper Park is designated a year after us, and I've already gotten some funding. By coincidence, I happened to go past that for a park transportation today, and, uh, there's no progress being done, so it's not like they were doing something that, that necessitated getting funding, so I just don't understand what the difference is and why they would have gotten. We, we wouldn't, um, so I was wondering if maybe we had gotten funding that I don't know about, or, uh, if perhaps somebody can put a fire under the Department of Transportation?
John, I, I know we've had this conversation. Carl, could you put a little bit of just what's going on? Carl's, Carl's the city planner on what's going on with Transit Village, some of the projects, because Carl, John and I have talked a couple of times. We have, actually, five projects have been approved in, in the Transit Village area. Uh, the one that you're talking about, Pavilion Avenue began construction, did some work without the proper permits, and got in trouble with certain agencies, including, uh, the telephone company, because they decided to remove a telephone pole without letting anybody know, and cut off all the telephone service for Pavilion Avenue. So, that, that company that is doing that work is in the process of correcting what they've done wrong and getting appropriate permits to forward. Uh, the other projects that have been approved, um, the different developers are taking their time as to whether they're going to develop right now, or looking into other opportunities. As to, uh, getting funding, what has happened also, the city did reach out to New Jersey Transit and Department of Transportation to get different funding, and we were told, no, we can't get the funding. It's interesting you say that Asper Park died, maybe things have changed. Uh, one of the things that we've been looking to get, which is the most important element to get in Transit Village, is a east-west pedestrian crossing of the railroad tracks to connect the west side of the, the city to the east side, to get people to the, to the platform, and also to the other side of the railroad tracks within the metro area. Uh, New Jersey Transit gave us an estimate that it was somewhere between three to three and a half million dollars to do it. Um, we went through many meetings with them, with various proposals on how to do it, either on above, a canary approach, similar to what they've done in South Ample, a tunneling, under looped roadway, um, or one I grade that has been done in other areas in the state of New Jersey and in other states, and in every situation, we've been told by New Jersey Transit, uh, specifically, specifically their operating department, they wouldn't accept those, and they would not fund them. So, what we have within our Transit Village ordinance is there's a requirement that if somebody wants to build something, even do a debt and bonus, and they actually have a pending project that may be coming forward, they are required to put money into a pool that will go to financing the interconnect from the east side to the west side. That's all I can really tell you right now. Everything we have is in place. We'll re-explore again with New Jersey Transit, see if they have any more funding available that can accomplish, I suppose. The frustration, if you will, is that, in my opinion, and I've mentioned this before at previous meetings, uh, is that further than you, that area from Casey Jones to Pavilion, uh, is, is true at best. Uh, and, uh, I think the way to attract the entire city, the way to attract use of the transit is to make the whole train station area more attractive and, and a field of safety and so on. And I just, you know, if you, you, you hear about projects, you don't see pro, projects, uh, and like Casey Jones, as an example, I've heard probably a year ago that they had a specific plan for it, and yet, nothing's been done. They have the approvals. Matter of fact, the whole area you talked about, uh, with the exception of one element that has full approvals to construct. City doesn't have the ability, other than the fact that there is a time clock ticking for how long your approval is good for. Once you get a final site plan approval, it is good for basically two years, with the possibility for three one-year extensions, so it's like five years. It's in the hands of the developers, the owners of the property, as to how they want to develop. The city isn't putting money into that, and I really, that's, that's the gateway to the city. It's really, it's the first railroad station outside of New York City within walking distance of the oceanfront.
So, so.
Really the gateway to the Jersey Shore. Um, we had discussed that with New Jersey Transit, and the best they could do for us was to repaint the station. Um, and, and we, we were very frustrated too with the fact that these things are not going forward, because when you start redevelopment, you want to keep the momentum going, and when everything stalls, other people who might want to invest in doing things in the city look at this and say, well, maybe I should wait a little while and see what happens, so.
Okay.
Okay. John, I, I wanted to just, um, if I wanted to add too, it's, it's on the subject, and it's a little different, and that is, you know, during the campaign, we also talked about that we have, you know, uh, my, my brother's a congressman here, we have Senator Vinny Gopel, both of whom live in Long Branch. Uh, last week, or two weeks ago, I should say, I met, Senator Gopel had a forum where the, the Commissioner of Transportation, uh, came down, and, uh, so I gave her a list of things that she said she would look into and get back to me on. And just today, uh, my brother's office called me, uh, because Stan had, had taken upon himself to clean up some, you know, some of the grounds there at the, uh, at the railroad station. And, um, so, I don't know, what, what happened to Stan? My brother just happened to ride by and, and, and said, wow, what is this? And then he, and then in the past, he'd said that you had gotten, they had, had given you some trouble for going onto their property and cleaning it, cleaning it up?
Yes, we actually went on transit property around City Hall, and down more around the Chelsea and Fifth Avenue area, and we were told that we have to stay on their property, and they would find the city.
But, but in any event, John, uh, they had called today, and so we're setting up an appointment where somebody from, uh, New Jersey Transit would come down, but we're just, I'm waiting till next week to see if the business administrator comes in, and we'll go and, and take a look at that. Also, in terms of Casey Jones, I know some of this code enforcement stuff too. I spoke with Stan just yesterday, or today was it, in terms of Casey Jones, I just replied to him, and it's just, you know, just the weeds and everything, right?
And contact was finally made with them today, and we're cutting it out Saturday.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Avery Grant, Atlantic Avenue, I'd like to commend you on your 100-day plan. It's a very positive one. You know, I think I live on Atlantic Avenue and, uh, Branchport Park, it looks very good as a state used board, uh, for. I would also recommend that you maybe collaborate with the school. We have a fund person, and we get a business fund for anything they have, even got a couple thousand dollars to help kids get eyeglasses, and I think we work together, there are things that could be done. And one initiative I would think is that we do have a work autotune program where our kids do get jobs. But the government has a lot of programs. When I was in these stores, they had this summer farm and youth program, and I would get a hundred kids, the schools, the children, the city got 250 kids, I would get a hundred because I had the largest apartment, and they worked four hours a day and they get no pay. So, I was encouraged to do some of those things. And also, I get concerns that they say, uh, some, some kids from out of town work on the beach. I would hope they would correct that, have our kids working there. But I think it's very positive from what I hear and what I see, and I think that we should be encouraged to do those things. And also, working with the county, uh, they, uh, do work, and one time, we were trying to, as we were building here, uh, some present park, and we were too late, because it didn't proxy to Fox Hill, other, and E town, and they didn't, uh, they never built it. But there are a lot of opportunities, we just have to reach out to the city, even with the transit. The transit board at one time had, uh, a beautification station. Now, your stations here are pretty new, so there's not much they can do there, I don't think. But they still had, uh, plans where we would do that, and I would have, when we had all three of our stations in these stores gone, and I would have a ceremony, say, come look around ceremony, because people ought to be recognized, and if you do something good, recognize the people. But again, I think it's very positive, you all took a good run, and I congratulate you on that.
Hey, um, Amy, if I could just comment on that, first of all, thank you, um, for saying that, and put a lot of time into drafting, um, that, that plan, and really using it as, as a guide. I think some of the best advice that we got on 100-day plan is exactly what you said, it's all about partnerships, it's all about doing this, um, together. Um, you know, for, for all of us to be working with 100-day plan, and we've said for the administration, that it's 100-day plan for Long Branch for all of us. One of the most, um, I think, I'm going to say heartwarming things when we first put out the plan, um, our city, all of our city employees, the responses that we got, people stepping up and, and just feeling so good that they could see where they were in the plan, you know, and see how they could contribute to, to everything and be a part of it. So, we, we appreciate your, your comment and, and pulling support and this partnership so that, that'll get us through. So, thank you. Who, who else has, has a comment?
Anyone else?
We have, we have a plan B, if we ran out of questions.
Well, to the, uh, young lady who's got up and, I won't carry her. The young lady who got up and spoke in regards to the website and, um, putting more information on it. We have talked a little bit, and we do realize that we need to improve our website. And some of the suggestions that we got was to include some of the high school students, because they are certainly, uh, for technology savvy, if you will, so we all look into it. We do realize that that's the improvement.
My question was, um, the master plan, I think, was from 2010, correct?
Yes.
Are we due for another master plan, and are there chances that, or any chance, that, um, some things could be undone from the original master plan?
Carl, could you address that, because we've had, Carl's had a lot of conversations with all of us about that.
As per state law, the next time the master plan has to be redone, the examination, the examination is in 2020. Okay? And it has to input and what can be done in the master plan. I think there's a misconception about the master plan. The master plan is not something that is just put together for the moment, it's built upon previous master plans, going back to the first one that was done in the city of Long Branch, which is 1955. And what the master plan really does is it, it, it puts together what is the resources of the city, what is it, it's kind of an inventory of things that are there now. It points out goals that are desired in the city, and it also points out potential problems and potential solutions for that. It's not so much of the master plan that you may want to figure about looking at, it's the zoning ordinances that come out of the master plan. An example, without getting into too much, that we're all aware of this right now, we may have hit the density, the residential density threshold in the city. So, something that is already being talked about to be looked at is modifying ordinances to lower density to the across the board of the city. But it's too early to really get into all the details of that, but it's kind of like, it's kind of the thing we're looking at right now.
Okay. Thank you. That was, uh, also, one of the things on the 100-day plan, I mentioned, are, uh, the meeting that we had with the Department of Community Affairs, uh, and, uh, it's a group of planners that, um, looked through our 100-day plan and said, these are some of the things that, you know, we could help you with. And Carl, you were part of that meeting where, um, they sent from a, you know, from a daughter perspective to review the master plan and, and help us look at what the, uh, 2020 plan should look like. So, I, I would be interested to get some outside, uh, outside, you know, views on that. So, that was, that's where we're going with that one. Thank you. This is an unusual event, though, Rick.
Hi, Rick, welcome, please. Um, I, uh, attended the NJTV forum last week, it was a very interesting conversation, um, about gentrification and quality of life. So, coming from that, I wondered if there were any, um, anything to plan within the city of looking at, uh, what the risk is for people in terms of housing displacement, and if there would be any possibility that there were some folks from Newark there that were talking about, um, ordinances to cap the, uh, the amount that rent increased within the city, so I wondered if there was any thought about that. And then also, so we're talking about shared services, as one of the larger municipalities in, uh, in the county, are there any opportunities for us to actually contract out our services to smaller municipalities to potentially, um, you know, bring in some of that?
So, uh, let me start with part two first, and you, like, generally, and, and maybe, Rob, you can address it too, generally with shared services, it seems that the smaller municipalities look, or larger municipalities, so leading back, um, so, but, Rob, with, with our chief manager with West Long Branch, we have, we have, you know, there's something about motion, how to ban the control, uh, code, oh, fuel pump? Right, I just, I mean, like, the neighborhood's small, smaller, and, yeah, so that's just what I was. In terms of, you know, the conversation that we had last, last week, it was great. I never reached out to Mr. Kraut, who's very, which is very concerning, because the other gentleman from New York, uh, I've worked with, just, you know, in the private sector, so I tend to reach out, and, and, uh, I also wanted to, because I, I, I also just wanted to mention, you know, I mentioned meeting with the, um, with the Commissioner of Transportation, and, um, you know, the Murphy, and I don't want to get, I don't want to get over here, but the Murphy administration, there's just a lot of positive things, you know, that are going on and help communities like Long, like Long Branch. And Anita was talking about this DCA program, in other words, that's a program that in the past, a lot of money was expended using a private engineer that, that they're offering the same services free of charge, and with experts.
Expert city planners.
Expert planners. So, uh, we're really would like to take advantage of a lot of new programs that, you know, that the current governor is, is offering communities and, and, and look at it very directed at us. I mean, I don't, Anita, if you want to add, ever, that's, that pretty much something about.
Yeah, it's a pretty good summary, yeah. But, um, uh, just to add to, Rick's commented about the, the TV production, um, and this was, um, Eric Long and, uh, Councilman Dankler, Dankler participated, um, in this, so there were our TV celebrities for the night, uh, and joined the panel with three other, uh, experts in the field of gentrification. I stumbled over that word, but basically, it's looking at when you start your redevelopment of a town, and what is the impact for everybody in terms of quality of life, what does it do in terms of rents, what does it do in terms of people's ability to be able to continue to live in, in the town? Um, we have the tape of that program, it happened last Wednesday, believe, last Wednesday. We have the, the whole tape of that, um, was at least an hour program, we'll put it on the website. If you get a chance really, um, to look at it, it's very interesting, and, uh, it gives just, gave us all a whole new perspective, um, looking looking at redevelopment and all the pieces that we need to look at in terms of the impact on residents in the city. It's worth taking a look at. Is there anything else that would like to ask a question or express a concern?
Anita, what was planned?
A plan, so.
I just have one question. Yeah, the Old Jersey Pride Store, what's being done about that? Has no one been contacted to have it written out somewhere so it opens up? So we have more stores in the area other than Fine Fair of Reading. We have Subway, we have the Donuts. I think somebody just took over John's Restaurant. And that is now Casey Jones, you know? That part of town, I think, Jane and the Tresco, and then 732 West End. I've been there six years. That's all I want to know.
Jimmy, I don't know. Was, is, I'm sure it's important.
We mentioned a couple of things. Casey Jones is approved for a ground floor commercial on the Morris Avenue side and the Third Avenue side with residential above and two levels of parking inside. That's one of the projects that the gentleman over here is concerned about. We're still waiting for the owners of the property to go ahead and build it. I believe one of the holdups is they're looking for somebody to finance it. It's a very expensive building to build the way they designed it. As to the Jersey Pride Store, it is in play. The owner of the property is negotiating with somebody else who may quit the liquor store there while they're rebuilding. They have approval to redo the existing liquor store down there. So it may be temporarily the liquor store while they build the new liquor store. And then that property then becomes in play again. There has been some interest from various types of businesses that want to go in there. That would be a food type use.
I also heard that 7-Eleven, somebody had planned to put the 7-Eleven in that area.
No.
No? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, so here's an easy one. What is one thing that would make your summertime better next year? What's one thing that we can work on that would be a significant improvement? So, okay, I think there are, go ahead. Yeah, so addressing the traffic, the situation, yeah. Which might well start with the toughest one, right? Yeah, what, what else?
Parking.
Parking. Yeah, yeah. Parking, traffic, did we notice, parking, traffic, here, Jimmy. Yeah, yeah. And, and, I don't know if you want to comment at some point, but those conversations are going on, you know? And as you can imagine, they're very complex and they may, you know, really big issues for us. But we know those are really major, major concerns. Yeah, wait one second. To enforce pedestrian parking areas, you know? Ocean Boulevard is threatened. Most streets, I mean, these people just don't stop. Pedestrian times are running low. I mean, there's signs, everything all over. And they just ignore it, you know, so. So they didn't enforce them? Yeah. Yeah. Because it's very dangerous. I mean, I know historically, people have gotten killed on Ocean Boulevard, right? Of course, many. Yeah. Okay, I think there were a few other. Residents of Long Branch ever be able to receive free beach passes? Would you want to cross that? Wait.
Is that to me? You know, I don't, I don't know. I'm being very honest with you. It's a, it's a, it's a real source of revenue for the city here, especially for the beach operation. I, I'm just being honest. I think it would be very difficult to do that. Long Branch, I don't know if anybody can back me up, but I believe that our, our fees are for sure less than most surrounding communities all along the entire Jersey Shore. And I think the only communities, if I'm not mistaken, there's only two or three that don't charge. One is Atlantic City, the other is Ocean City, and I literally think there's, and Wildwood. I don't know how any of that, I don't know how any of that began. But I think especially with, you know, with the nature of our beaches now and the revenue that's needed to maintain the beaches, I think that would be really, I'm just being honest, I think it would be unrealistic. I'm sorry, can you show it to me?
With all the development coming to Long Branch, you don't have enough visitors coming into town to take that cost away?
You know, it's certainly something, you know, look, it's a good point. It's certainly something that we could look into and, and, I don't know. Stan, can you, do you have any, any, um?
So I could get, I could get that. Absolutely, but I believe there was a.
Yes, I'm sorry. You know, I apologize. And of course, there was, there was a Supreme Court case. And again, I don't have the details, but they tried to do that. Where they tried, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry I'm confusing you. Yeah, there was, there was a Supreme Court case, I believe it was Delmar, where they tried to offer residents free beach badges. And it was not bound because the idea was that, you know, the beach is state property or public property and that, you know, they wouldn't allow it. That the beach is open to everyone. I don't know. So yes, I mean, and again, that's, that's accurate if you're thinking about it. And I apologize because you're right, that's why we couldn't do it. We're just for Long Branch residents, certainly, why not consider it? Because as you said, they are mostly visitors. But again, if you look at Wildwood and Ocean City and Atlantic City, they allow everyone, whether you're a resident or not a resident. So, so like I said, I think Delmar was the case that went to the Supreme Court. And they determined that you couldn't do it. It would have to be free for everyone. Yeah, you can't distribute. I mean, Carl, are you sure I'm right?
You can't differentiate between a resident and not a resident. That's what the case is. That you have to apply across the board. In Atlantic City, Wildwood, and the other towns that do that where you don't pay, they have built in, when it has a tourist area like Atlantic City, when you pay a hotel bill, part of what goes into what you're paying goes to the maintenance and upkeep of the beaches. So you're actually paying for it that way.
I don't want you to think that your comments.
I'm sorry, Anita, and I would like to say that one of the things we are going to look at is changing the age limit, making that a little higher for free passes for kids or for teenagers.
So we have another question here. I don't want you to think that your comments are not being recorded. Beth is writing down, you know, information for us. So we'll have all this stuff that we can go back to. But we have another question.
So in that same, William Brown, Second Avenue, Long Branch. So in that same vein, there, for full-time Long Branch residents, because as I've said, that's counseling being Long Branches, quickly becoming a transient town. So that would include even discounts for, for full-time residents?
That I don't know, though, man. That's something we certainly look into. That would be a very good idea. I, I don't know. I, I mean, I, without thinking about it, I'm thinking again, is that one of the same thing Carl, or Carl would just say where you're giving a discount to residents? I, I don't know. It's something we could look into. Thank you.
All right, and I just want to thank everyone, mayor, council, for doing a great job.
Thanks.
I appreciate a lot of the residents that I speak to, appreciating everything that you're doing. Back to the Transit Village, the Commissioner of Transportation, Diana Scichetti, is a very approachable person. I'm sure if you contacted her office, she would absolutely come down and have a conversation.
I'm, I'm sorry, what's her, what was her name?
Diana Scichetti.
Yeah, that's who we met, she was great. She was great. And she seemed very receptive. And was very familiar with the variety of things.
Yeah, yeah. She, she would absolutely be interested in, because she really is concerned about the state, you know? She's very proactive. And that's it. Thank you.
But you bring up a good point because New Jersey Transit has a program with the city of Long Branch where we, you know, if you take the train and go to the beach, we give them what? It's $3.50, I think, a reduced rate. So that's a very good, that's a very good thing that we should look into. Thank you.
Okay, another question.
Susan Lighters, City Tower Road. I want to come back to the crossing of Ocean Boulevard. I happen to live where I can see all the people running for their lives. And whoever thinks somebody isn't going to get killed there, I don't know whether the temporary police support can be stationed periodically where they stop the cars. I would love, and I believe very strongly in our police officers in this town, I would like them to be standing there and giving out tickets. There are people who go around cars and literally revenges to go past you. It is just plain dangerous. So I really hope you will put that into your plan. It's very important to the residents and to the visitors who are now parking further back as we have paid parking.
Chief, do you have anything to say right now about that?
I agree with you. That was a horribly designed road, whatever they designed it, back in, I guess, the seventies or eighties. We have done whatever we could to help that situation we assigned. Crossing guards, the lights started two years ago. We've entered a partnership with a pedestrian safety. Basically, you'll see the signs around town in the summer. We put out sandwich boards out there. Also, we have assigned a special player over the summer. Unfortunately, we can't be there 24 hours per day. We will do it again next summer. I don't know what the answer is there to get that fixed. We are trying to get fences installed on Ocean Avenue between where Morris and and Bron, yeah, North Broadway there. So you see the people that kind of go over the median there and they, they run out in front of people and that's also not a very good thing. So the county is hopefully going to install a fence there sometime before next summer. You know?
The thing that people don't understand, we, for actually three years, we've been working with the county to put a fence in there. It's been approved, design has been accepted. It was supposed to be up this summer. People forget that most of Ocean Boulevard from Long Beach down to July Avenue is a state highway. And from July Avenue down past where you see the pure village, that's a county highway. We have asked them to do this. And I'm not trying to pass the buck here, but why they haven't installed it, I have no idea.
I just have, I just wanted to add to my point. Just making it totally unrealistic, I'm sorry, I'm going to the power. In Conrads, California, where I was spending some part of the winter, they actually have on the streets a button that you can press. And on the signs that we have, where you have, you know, yield to pedestrian, flashing lights go off when people are crossing, actually crossing the street. I, as I've said, it may be impossible, especially as we have so much traffic. But that was one alternative that I know I've seen work.
Yes, we have discussed it. It's a county road, so once again, they would have to do it. They, I believe, have a feeling because it is a four-lane roadway that they're not sure if someone hits the button and walks out and one person stops and the other person doesn't. And that may cause more problems. So that's why they're a little leery of actually coming out and doing that. But we had to discuss that option.
Jay, what was the, then we weren't really able to be a little more uniform in terms of the speed limit there?
Right, we've been working with the county and state for the last couple of years to try to lower the speed limit there. We wanted to get it 25 miles an hour through the whole section. And we've been sort of semi-successful. I think we've got it down to 35 in some places and 30 in some other places. So they came out and did a traffic study for that to happen. And that's as low as they would give it to us for now. Hopefully, we can continue to work with that and possibly get a lower in the future because we definitely regret it.
I know exactly how you feel because I'm one of those that runs. Every time I cross College, forget it. College is very dangerous and I know exactly how you feel. And I've been talking to Jason, we're just trying to stay, but stay on top of that. Our hands are tied with the county line, with the county road. So we're going to stay on top of that, I promise you that, because I walk there a lot. I go to Portwalk as much as possible and I walk. So I know exactly how you feel.
And I think it's either Darlene or Susan, they, the, same as what Marilla said. I have a 10-year-old and when I cross Ocean Boulevard, go to that, I mean, I just, you know, he's in the middle school guy, ripped his hand and hold on to it. Because I find the biggest problem, which I think somebody alluded to, is that somebody can stop in one lane and you just walk and figure, okay? And that next person just zooms right by. You know, I'd like to think that they're innocent, they, you know, they're not thinking and they're, and so I don't really know. But boy, that is really a danger. That, that's amazing, most dangerous part of that four-lane highway there.
It's not an issue, but it's just a recommendation that you have a dream book of things that you want to do. And as an example, with the Board of Education, our superintendent, Mr. Prainer, it heard that the state was going to develop a program to build schools. And they were still discussing it. And he came to the board and said, can I buy a proctor lot on Seventh Avenue? And we discussed it, we agreed this. He said, can I hire an engineer to do some planning? And the guy who said yes, not knowing what this would come about. And what happened? We got five brand new schools that's paid for by the state. So what I'm saying to you, think about what you want to do and see what might be a priority and make plans for us that you're first up to take. Because any new program, they want it to be successful, the first shot out. And since Long Branch was the first one to knock on the door, reverse itself, they gave us, and it was not easy, but we had to do a lot of planning. And I know that you're doing that. So, and there might be things, like you said, the parking garage. There might be funds from your parking fees that you could do some planning on that and something along the line would come. There are so many programs, when they came out, the community block grant program, they gave the states freedom of power to spend that money from the federal government. And I won't go into the reason why, because it was not a good reason why. But it helped the states. So you don't know what might be on the line. So I would say, get your dream book together and spend a little money, do a little planning as to what you might do and be first on the line. But again, I compliment you for this meeting.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is America and I live in Philly, New York. I would like to know, I know this is too late now, but why were a lot of these buildings on Ocean Avenue built without a underground garage? To help out with the parking? Because I know the hotel that's going up, they're saying that they don't have any parking available. So they're going to try and get a dally parking. So my point is that if those people have any business coming in, So my point is that if those people have any visitor's coming in, where these visitors are gonna go, they're not gonna want their dally parking, they're gonna try and find what parking space to take away from the town.
For this free information, every building that's being built on Ocean Boulevard has their own parking on-site in the building.
But the hotel?
The hotel is part of the rest of Pure Village 3, that's connected to 2, connected to 1. What they have is this garage that's going into the residential section of Pure Village 3, to two-level garage that's gonna be built there. But they also have an arena that is made under the previous administration, with the previous owner of Pure Village, the Fly Corporation, but their unbelievably impressive 200 cars are to be situated on the Chandler Maps site. Originally, then, that developer was gonna develop that with the lodges. The city stepped in, when that developer decided to sell the whole project, to acquire Chandler Maps, to prevent another developer coming in and taking that and developing something on their own that does not benefit the entire city. And the city, this administration has discussed the importance of what is developed on Chandler Maps. It's really one of the most important properties that the city owns as to what may affect the development of roadway and the huge abuse of the ocean from the general power.
So speaking of parking, what actually are we doing with parking for West End? Once the other building goes up? Those of the businesses, ground floor, and the apartments on the second, third, fourth, whatever level, parking was not part of that plan.
Which building?
On Ryan.
The one that, from the fire that was burned?
From the fire.
Okay, well, those were allowed to rebuild based upon, while they look bigger and different, they had any new code requirements, but the numbers were there, and were there prior to the fire.
Same density.
Same density?
Well, most buildings have really been built.
The other building that has been finished, the Bayville guys that are in, they actually have three parking spaces below that to accommodate what they did for the residential.
For how many units?
There, I believe there's four units of it total.
Three parking spots for four units, and both two bedrooms, all two bedrooms?
No, no, they're more like walls.
Okay, because I thought that the density increased with that.
Now, the other building, the Guckman building that used, that burnt down, has the same number of units as was in there before.
Okay.
The building got larger because they had any American Disability Act requirements, and they had any International Building Code requirements when they built the building.
Right.
So because of that, they had to put an elevator in, so the floor plan actually morphed a little bit towards the north, where they, to the alleyway, to the alley, but it's under a property, it's not in the city property.
Okay.
But it looks large, but it isn't, it's the same number of units.
Okay, thanks.
We wanna watch our time a little bit, because we said we were gonna end at 8:30, but we have just one more question, and this almost brings us full circle to how do we get information out that we're gonna have a town meeting? And what Rose said, you know, this is our first town meeting, so we're looking at different formats, ways to run the town meetings that make the most sense. So, would you like to have town meetings on specific topics? And would the topic of should Long Branch have a pier be a subject? Should we have a town meeting on that? What do you think? Okay? And obviously, it would be, you know, we need to get a lot more information, and we need to put information out to you beforehand, so, you know, we don't be hogging from the same, with the same information in front of us, but it's a big decision. Do we wanna have a pier? What kind of pier would we wanna have? So, as we were talking in our workshop meetings, it's the idea of, well, you know, how do we get everybody, an opportunity for input, for people to, you know, say what they would like to, how they would like this in Long Branch to develop. So we'll put that, we'll keep that in mind for our next one. We're gonna turn it back over to Rose. Thank you. I think this is working out. I just wanted to ask the other council members if you wanted to say a few words. Good. Are you okay?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. We're very excited about seeing so many people come to our first town meeting. Maybe it wasn't what you expected, but we're always gonna hear, and we're gonna improve it. And if you have any questions, any suggestions, as you heard the mayor say, it's an open-door policy, and it's your city, you can make it better, but only you can tell us what you feel. And I certainly wanna thank all of you for coming tonight.
I wanna thank everybody for coming also, and my favorite part of this job is interacting with the people. And you get to know me, I'm always talking to everybody, feel free to talk to me, because that's my favorite part. And thank you, and remember, when we meet again on the next one, if there's anything we can improve on, we'd love to do it. Thank you.
Any other comments? So I guess my comment is, thank you for your patience with us too. As we keep experimenting and finding what's the right way, the most effective way to get information out and to interact together and to, you know, bring our city forward. We appreciate you, your support, and giving us your feedback and working with us on it. So again, as we've all said, thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Also, on behalf of the council, certainly the mayor, I may thank your partner, Beth, for coming out, because this is something new for them as it is for us. It's new for the residents, and we're glad that you didn't think that it was a waste of time to come out and just do us your thoughts. And on this particular issue or benefit that we're reaching out for, please understand that we're gonna all go together on this, and we'll get it a little better, a little smoother. But again, we need to hear from you, and this is part of us being accessible, because we're here, we're elected officials, but we're here to serve you. Thank you very much.
And if you haven't signed up in the back, please do. And Beth has been taking notes, so we're planning to follow up on everything we've discussed here, and I just wanna also just again, thank you for your time to come here tonight and give us your concern and your ideas. Thanks. Thanks, and good night.
I remember when you started, so.
Nobody's walking now, that's the problem. And whether you have jobs or whether you have, it would have been the same, nobody would have gone. So we're trying to.
I have people next to me.
We could be a group of four of us, um, to put together, if we had a new junior apartment, to invest the money, which is basically a sweet, putting the money in debt, or something like that. And that's the, and it might be, it might be a huge thing.
You will be this one. All of a sudden, you, oh, this one, I. I even took pictures of New Jersey Transit Stadium, like where I go to run, do the different, like the training pattern. I go there, and I'm walking over to the starting line, there's a white dress that has more train farm on it than we have here, and exactly we wanted to do. Okay. Take care. And that was an hour and a half, that was that was the, um, um, back in 30, uh, years. So the event, I had to, uh, change just like it's out. Had to, well, we can't have the road, uh, that's a thing, an ancient change. The solution was, there was no electrification in that branch, or you haven't set. And then right after they moved, they even built, they changed the whole operation. That's what you keep trying to know, it's basically, think about this, if you remember before they closed the road. Good to see. We even, we even said, to get the record, we even said, we're afraid of the freight station. And we agreed, like, every single station, and it was, it was twice, it seemed like. Like that's completely, and it looked down, all the way up out on it. Hotel, I just, everybody said, oh, they need to just pay down, they don't want to pay. The hotel does, right, they can develop commercial on the north side of the street. And develop, uh, the same person, just give them the same balance. If you go to West Side, if you've ever been there, I don't, it's like, yeah. And they have, they do that for humans, they're two levels, and you do that for commercial on the street. So you have to work two of them, but you're in service to the back of the store. And you have stores that would be, walk to two level stores. And the West Side.
And then, all of the detractors, more detractors.
Exactly, that's, that's been, that's been, that's been, that's been, that's been, that's been. That gets, that gets screwed up. Nothing will, it's a little bit of a wall, and it's stopped over there. And the other thing is, you want to, you're putting this up here. Might get somebody else. Do, very little, so. Might get somebody who was, like, do, do, very little, very small. Okay, 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 take your eyes, and I'll project looking. Then take it back.
That guy, which I'm scared, which is what you should be doing as far as proactive. Right, right. Be proactive with how we do it here. Same thing he did.